For their input on what they saw their department needs were. And this isn't a, this meeting isn't to dissect everything in every one of those reports. It's to provide background so that the council is aware of all of those things. And then from those, plus other priorities that the council may have, to literally make a list and put things on paper and on the board. And then talk about what kind of priorities that you have for the items that you determine are important. I know that the council hasn't done this in the past, but the goal is that if we work through this process that, and we end up with a priority list, it doesn't mean that nothing else gets done, but it means that as we go through the year and at year end, when we're looking at what we've accomplished or not, that we had a plan moving into it about what was important and that would, may have to be adjusted. But you can, it's hard to know if you got where you wanted to go, if you didn't know where you wanted to go in the first place. This is sort of how I would phrase this. So this provides, the council, it provides me with a set of the council's priorities for accomplishment, and that translates down through to the department heads. So, as I said, you, we have some good reports from all of the departments talking about how they see their needs evolving this year and what they consider important. And it's likely that you'll see these items discussed or brought to the council as time goes on. But the big question, and I'm going to go up there and write these things down, is what the council sees as priorities or subjects or things that you want to work on for this coming year. For example, I've spoken to one counselor who, actually Counselor Key emailed me and said that a priority for him for this coming year was a plan and development, further development of the waterfront. That, that's a priority that he wants on the council's work plan and, you know, whatever that, whether it's moving forward with the harbor plan that we have a grant for, all those kind of things. But, so if Counselor Key was sitting here and I could, he would say waterfront development, and that would be, that's something on the list. And we're just going to make a list. And then, once you, all the ideas you've got, then you're going to talk about, how do they rank in terms of priority? If there are 20 things on the list, it's not possible to do them all in one year successfully. So, how do you prioritize what? So does that sound like a fair way to, and a reasonable thing to do so that we have a plan moving forward? We've spent a lot of time cleaning up things and taking care of past stuff. And so, and if we're going to be moving forward, I think it's best if we have, you articulate upfront, sort of, instead of just reacting to things, if we're more out in front of where you think things ought to go. So. Don't everybody talk at once. Paul's going to leave. What other priorities did, or items that the, other items that the council think are important to work on in the coming year that we need to have as well?
You're talking big thing, and then there'd be several things underneath it. Recreation.
Public safety.
Public safety. Any public safety?
Fire and police in particular.
Fire?
Fire and police.
Specifically the water.
We don't use these.
Right. Specifically the waterfront area.
Waterfront?
Do you want to read Chigri's? When I say waterfront, I mean under broadband, right?
Yeah.
The other thing is, I'd like to make sure that we maintain our tax mill rate where it's at.
The next item is the budget priorities, and that's where I would ask for input on, if you want to maintain the mill rate, if you want to try and bring it down, what, where are you on budget priorities? Okay, waterfront development, which is primarily, I think he was talking Marina. Recreation, under recreation, maybe what?
Well, to see if there's any possible grants out there to create a splash pad at the pool. They'll enhance that area and bring more people in, into that area to use it. And maybe, maybe grants available for that. Also, look at the possibility of putting sprinkler systems on a couple of the town-owned fields because the water trains they have now are going to have to be replaced and are very expensive. It may be more cost effective to put automatic sprinkler systems in.
So fields maintenance with sprinklers?
Yeah.
Okay. Subs under that?
Solar power for the treatment facility.
You want to be man away here? Put these on the wall. Sorry, that was a bad analogy.
Under that infrastructure, Pac Street extension or Broadway extension?
Yep.
Also, look at the extension of Forest Avenue up into that housing development so you create a second egress out of that neighborhood.
Number three, let's say fire and EMS.
Fire EMS employees.
Is that the grants, or is that something you want to do new, or, I think it should be public safety, you know, should be added to that.
Public safety?
Yeah, all of these three looked at. Public safety and fire, I think, is one.
What's that?
That's what we started out as. And then we broke it into the same thing.
Under recreation, I've had several people ask if there's any way to get bathrooms somewhere on the trails, you know, whether it's rustic, you know, like you see in parks, with a tank, because a lot of the older people, if they want to go walk, they need a place to.
Trail restrooms, that's a?
Yeah.
I don't know. We have a restroom up there that the town paid for up around the football field. Is that open?
It's open for events, I think, but I don't think it's open year round. I think they lock it at night after every event. It's not open every day.
Are you talking to the staff slowly?
Yes, right, but there's two bathrooms. We have to develop some type of program where it's open at 6:00 in the morning and close at 8:00 at night.
I mean, we have them down here that are open, that are not manned, right? They're open 24/7.
But you've got cameras down here on the waterfront. You know, maybe a camera could be put up there and we could use that for security purposes.
The waterfront people clean those too, so adding, that would add that need.
But, see if we can utilize something we already have there.
It doesn't get much broader than this, but we've got to encourage businesses to get into town. And I know a lot of folks have talked about that in their, in their requests and their proposals that are across, but business friendly or, I don't know, you know, business encouragement.
Rich talked about the economic development plan that got updated, that, that, if you were to work on that economic development plan, that clearly has a, so you're creating an, or continuing, fostering an economic development attitude.
Can we actually have a economic development, I don't know, I don't want to say this, convention type thing where, you know, we actually put on a, invite developers in or business people in and show them around town, you know, maybe give them a dinner or something like that to encourage economic development? Like a trade show almost. I don't know if that's something we, has been done or?
Well, I mean, what I see as part of the problem is just infrastructure. There's not enough, and I don't know how we solve that, but there isn't enough space, you know? Besides the flower shops, there isn't a lot of infrastructure on Main Street that could be, we've got to find a way to encourage people to build.
On Main Street and stuff, but I mean, we have an industrial park, we have a business park.
So do you want 27 Main Street on the?
Yes.
On a major bullet level, call it HR, and under that, you know, a year ago, we realized that, and it's still, I think, premature, but a year ago, we were looking at health reimbursement funding, because that's one of the major costs. And also under HR about getting P, employees' pay raises again in town. Town employees getting pay raises.
Under that one, can we look into the parent system?
Yeah.
For some, I know it's 50%, 55%, and some are more than that.
Yes. It's all over the map.
Right.
Something else we could look at that's been discussed on some other committees is the sidewalk situation and the parking. A lot of people have a problem with that angled parking and going to, if there was a way to go to parallel, it would make more sidewalk space, like around the Alamo. We need to fix out back behind the, behind the flower shop.
I've asked for engineering on that and for the one we talked about at the last committee meeting, the drainage issue. So we could put the drainage and parking lot behind Main Street and the one up on Woodland Heights.
I'd like to encourage more participation, more participation in our process. I don't, how we try to sell that or, you look around here now, we've got two, two or three people that, you know, aren't associated with what we're, what we're doing here. By no stretch do we have all the answers, and it's just kind of nice to, we're up here throwing darts against the wall, and sometimes we maybe weigh off to what, how the people are thinking about, you know?
I'd like to create some type of a small monument or memorial to paper making. AIM has saved a original dryer can off number one paper machine that has the original Rice Barton logo embedded in it that they're saving for us. We wanted to make that as part of the monument, so to speak, just, you know, basically saying, somewhere near the mill saying, this is a former site of, you know, how many, 75 years, 80 years of paper making.
I do some with the historical society. I know we've talked about that in the past, of shoring that up, of putting, you know, having some storage out there. I know somebody's talking about storage in here too, that, trying to incorporate something in there. I think it's wasted space that we're not utilizing.
Or, Peter, make that part of the Marina plan?
The whole thing, right, yeah. Incorporate all that in there, yeah.
Talked about possibly, depending, you know, what's going to happen with the chamber building because there's some maintenance issues involved with that. But we had floated the idea about putting some type of a little shed type roof on the back of the chamber building for storing our waterfront maintenance equipment. And right now, we have just a small building down here, we can't get all the equipment in. So if we were, say, chamber, chamber building upgrade.
That's a good one, and store, overall department storage needs because police and fire are extremely, we're shut, we're moving things around to try and keep them. So.
I know along with that waterfront piece and Paul, Paul and I, when we were on the waterfront committee, the state of the docks are in serious need of repair and the whole upgrade. And I know that Mike had that in his plan.
Yeah, and that's well noted in Mike O'Malley's speech report, yeah.
There are a number of items that have been in different departments' reports.
And I think, I think when we see those, I think a lot of these will cross pollinate to matching up with what we're talking about too.
I think so, that the public safety discussion, which does extend across, we are expanding our, our fire side with the two employees that we have the grant for, but there's, there are staffing issues and police and dispatch, and the current manner of replacing cruisers is starting to cost us a lot in maintenance in that second year. So the review of public safety, I think, has got a number of components under it if you.
I'd like to see us at least have some discussion with the railroad about possibly doing some type of a purchase or some agreement on the abandoned rail lines that are between the House of Pizza and our gazebo. They're all, they're basically an eyesore, and it's a pretty good sized green space. Be a nice place to put, you know, if you ever had some type of vendors or anything like that on the waterfront.
All the way down, down to the mill, it's all just rubble.
Yeah.
Down grass and rubble, but still rubble.
Would Wilson Hall on your list?
Yeah, it's going to come up again.
Well, no, I, depending on.
Do we even have to put it on there?
Well, it's, it's a work in progress.
I mean, there is potential for green space there as well.
I had a resident contact me this week about the idea of Bucks Board having a food sovereignty ordinance similar, there are 18 communities that have those that allow basically farmers to sell directly to customers without being subject to the rules of the state. And it's legal in a state to have these, for a community to have such an ordinance, but it is, as I said, there are 18 communities that currently have those for someone who has cows and has milk or vegetables or any of these kind of things that then don't have to go through, to sell direct to a customer, don't have to go through those rules. And so, can I put that on the, would that be something the council would consider looking at? That's, like I said, there are, in encouraging, how do I spell this word?
I mean, do you think it'd be okay if you sell my eggs to people?
Well, that's, that's really what the, you know, that you wouldn't be able to do that without being subject to inspection or any of those kind of things through the state. The state approved that, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, that they adopted that, that municipalities had the right to have such ordinances within them. You couldn't have gone home if you didn't see transportation.
Meeting. What do you mean by that, Paul?
Public transportation, I think.
Public transportation.
Oh, I see why you wouldn't be able to go down. I think if we, if we take a look at what some of the departments are asking for and kind of maybe incorporate some of the things, because, I mean, we can go down through the list and they have some good things that we can add those.
They do, absolutely.
Because I know Craig had talked about, you know, setting up a substation, which, for those of us that live out in the.
That helps with my house insurance. And response time.
I, you know, again, on a personal, I think, codifying and looking at all the town codes and regulations that we have, you know, keep, keep that process going.
Keep that process, yeah.
And again, like, and I think Rich put it in his, you know, one of the big things is working with a big piece of property down at the end. We've got, we always have to keep our fingers in that and make sure that we're paying attention to what's going on down there because, as we've seen in the past couple of days, things can come and you never know what's going to happen.
Housing, so elderly, a nursing home or elderly housing?
Elderly housing, assisted living elderly housing, or housing in general.
Yeah.
We're going to need housing in general, both senior.
As well as, it really is all ages.
All age, right.
Housing?
Yeah.
I mean, that encompasses, if we want to bring in businesses, we want to have a place for those folks to settle in town and be right now. I mean, we're, we're on the low end of that, you know, having quality, new, good housing. It would just work, somebody wants to go build a house, it's.
There's not even that much land for sale.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Take it from someone who's looking in Maxwell.
Right.
There is some difficulty.
Anything else come to mind out there? Jim, Chris, chief?
Put a couple of community buildings out away from town. We've got kids out there that can't walk to the pool. They can't walk to the recreation facilities that they have in town. They're out there and they have to wait for their parents to have time to drive them in here. We have no recreation anywhere.
Would transportation be beneficial then, sir? Transportation to pick them up, bring them in?
I think that would be a good option in the short term.
Yeah.
Is to try to at least have some type of bus service two or three days a week that can go help make.
So under public transportation, it can also include for recreational opportunities for people in the community.
If you've got public transportation, if you're talking about, we're here, you're not talking about putting public transportation out to where the people, you know, in areas can visit anywhere.
I would hope that we.
That's an expensive venture.
I think that's, I think that's where public transportation is needed more.
We do have a taxi available. Yeah, we keep that in mind too.
What's that?
We do have a taxi available in place right now that's being much more utilized, and that taxi's designed to, built to bring people into that.
They are starting to discuss about the rural transportation issues. And I can tell you, there was a webinar sponsored recently that there were participants to get ideas out of that, so probably. They are starting to discuss about the rural transportation issues, and I can tell you, there was a webinar sponsored recently that there were participants to get ideas out of that, so probably see things coming forth in the future.
I mean, even if you had public transportation out in that area, just in the summer months.
Yeah.
For the kids that are out of school, would, would help some, because adults could take the taxi, kids could too, but it's only one day a week, isn't it?
I don't know how many parents put their kid in a taxi.
Recreation opportunities in rural areas of the community?
Yeah.
I know, yeah, more bike friendly stuff like bike lanes, more stuff for people to keep their bikes safe and some other programs.
Don Yurts.
Just back on the transportation, they coordinated transportation, they sprawled there, because the Y does not now have access to a van that they can transport their participants in because of insurance purposes, the van's too old, doesn't have, has some problems. But if you had a van that was serving, just as they did with the Y, they picked up a group of seniors, took them up to the top of the conservation area during the autumn, you have kids bring them into the pool, blah, 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 and you could have that van on the road three or four times, or three or four days a week, hiring a local person, services at the town garage, you can get a donation of a van, other communities have done that, and you also have access to taxis, you have to cats, and it would be a help. The school is sitting on a brand new, I'm not saying you take it or workshop it up there, but it's selling on the road, particularly on weekends, and if you've got something that is a need, is a need among seniors, is a need for kids too young to drive, is a need among people who don't have a car, and I suspect many of these people would put a few bucks in the pot, it would at least cover the maintenance expenses. Donations could come in from one of two places, one of them just recently, now they go donate a van nearby.
The school has three vans now, actually, and the town uses one on the waterfront, and Mr. Muppie lets them use to transport people, so that could work together, as far as getting open access to get kids into town, I'm sure that the school would work with that.
We should kind of, it sounds like transportation's a big issue, that we ought to, I hate to say it, put some type of a research committee together to identify the real needs and the solutions to it, so.
Yeah, if you start to pick, there's a transportation component in.
Right. Yes, sir.
You recorded this, right?
I got a couple of things here that I thought about, first of all, I want to say thank you for the folks that came to the Hattlesol thing the other night, a lot of what we talked about, a lot of the things that we've discovered are on the wall here, which is really encouraging. A couple of things I wrote before I came to the meeting, because I wasn't sure how the meeting was gonna progress, and you, I think Peter had talked about council rules and things of that nature, I really think that the, the last time the council rules were up, were written as being updated was one eight eleven, so some of the rules need to be reviewed, the most glaring example has caused some comments is the attendance issue. I'm gonna get specific, because I think it's important on this, it says, these excused absences need, well, absences need to be excused, whether that's a vote or whatever, there's no record of absences being excused to these meetings that I can see, there's no action taken by the council, I don't know what that means to be excused from a meeting of the council, the discrepancy between the charter and the, and the, and the council rules is three and six, you know, I guess one sort of passes the other and, and as far as regulations go, but just to review with all the council rules is something I think is a good idea to do, more frequently than once every seven years. One of the things that I think are important, and some of these may, may be addressed perhaps by the town manager, but we really need to get serious about our electronic presence and our electronic record keeping, we need to make sure that records aren't deleted, or if they're stored somewhere, that there needs to be a public trackable access to those stored records, if things are taken down off the webpage, that needs, we need to know where we can find it, or how we can search it, and I know that's, that's doable, so develop an electronic records policy, assign the website to a, to a job description, find somebody who's responsible, who can do this, who has to be trained, and make sure that's on their, it's on their job description, with preferably, hopefully, some backup. Finally, as far as that goes, develop a social media policy, I think it's really critical that we're letting the public know that we are reviewing whatever's up there periodically, we are reviewing comments made, and that we have a policy that addresses that, that's one of those things that, like, safety meetings, that nobody ever wants to do, but it can really save a lot of trying to get folks down the road. One other thing that I was trying to remember what we, I will say, there is a, we're trying to form through the Senior Resource Committee, a transportation committee, we haven't gotten much off the ground yet with that, but, so as far as transportation goes, I know the mayor mentioned about forming a group, we're trying to get a group going there, but certainly the town, I'm sure the town council would be much more effective in that, there was one other thing, I, of course, I would forget, because I don't have my pencil with me. Anyways, I, I'm sure I'll remember, but I just wanted to bring these things up, these are basically housekeeping type of things that I think are very important to, to sort of, to close up in the future, thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I know what it is.
Come on back up.
No, it's under public safety, I really think the council should get, and this is no disrespect to Craig and his efforts, because I know he's done a lot of good work, but I really think the council should investigate and try to understand the emergency action needs in this town, specifically as it relates to the dam, the new inundation zone maps, and perhaps, you know, get a group together to see what we can do to promote full understanding of emergency planning, whether it relates to the waterfront, whether it relates to the mill, or the tank farm, or whether it relates to the dam, and investigate the possibility of a, of a townwide alarm system, thank you.
Stephen St. Peter Junior, I'd like to suggest looking into a, a learning center for disabled people like myself, to learn independent living skills like cleaning, cooking, how to take care of themselves, I think that would benefit the town, it would probably bring more people that have disabilities to the town, so, did I throw that out to you guys?
Under townwide alarm system, you're thinking in terms of like a reverse nine one one?
I'm not sure I understand what that is.
You can, by area, send a reverse phone call out to all the citizens, either townwide or in a particular area regarding, could be a forest fire, or flooded area downtown, you know, something like that, I, I know that, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe right now for the dams and other key things, that not only this town, but other towns get together and discuss what their action plan will be, both locally with the existing, the, our, the communities nearby and the state police, and that's already something that's in, in progress, this nine one one would be, we've had incidents in town where a SWAT team may have had to come in, because, and they could, in that, those few blocks or half of the town, something could be put out over the nine one one system, that phones would ring and say, stay in your home until further noticed, we have a police action or something, I, I, I don't know what would be said, but that's what nine one, reverse nine one one is.
Thank you.
As, as opposed to an air raid siren going off that no one would know what the hell's going on?
Well, that might be the answer if the dam's gonna break, or if the dam, the reverse nine one one, I don't think is gonna solve that particular issue, the dam is a critical, is labeled a critical dam in that situation, and I think that needs to be investigated, an alarm system of some sort needs to be investigated and followed up on, there is currently, and I think the chief, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the, the aim has done, along with Verso, when they were there, tabletop sessions or reviews of the current procedures that relates to some of these emergency activities, and most of them revolve around phone trees, which I've worked, as I'm, I'm sure you have many times, during emergency situations, phone trees are problematic at best, call, are phone calls and calling ahead, and who knows how frequent the list is updated, but the other thing is, is that I've attended some of the local emergency planning meetings, when they contact me, as soon as I can find out when they're meeting in Ellsworth, and I've yet to see a representative from Bucksport be there, and, and I think that's important, that, that we understand what's available, what we can do, now, the, the town's needs, shall we say, have changed since the mills shut, but we still have those needs, I think that the public, I think there needs to be more interest in that, that area in this town, so, thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
What else?
Do you want to investigate feasibility of giving certain apartment owners monies to help them spruce up their buildings and stuff, or like landscaping, roofing, doors, windows, and new parking lots maybe?
I was thinking we have grants as well.
Yes, that's what it's called, I'm sorry.
And the Central Street, that parking lot, are we gonna talk about doing that this year, with the drainage?
Yeah.
It's part of the drainage.
I think we look at a sidewalk going up Central Street at the same time, see a lot of people on that street, that's pretty narrow.
That, that's a tough one because of the right of way, that's one of the narrowest right of ways in town.
I know, but the church has already said they would give up, then that would, we would be the rest of it, if we, if we get it from the church and us, if you get all the way.
We might get it all the way up to Franklin Street.
Right.
Do we have an engineer on payroll in this town?
We, if we need to use one, we use Alber, and we, it's paid, they get paid when they're called, they're, they're not on a retainer, but that's who we use.
Is it more cost effective to use them than just a?
Only because they, they've done the work on the treatment plant, they've done a lot of other work here in the community, and their rate to us is, has been very favorable, and they, because they've done that work, they have a background in what our sewer systems are and all that kind of stuff, so when they start looking at things, there's, they're not climbing a hill to understand where they are before they.
I know, it's always nice to have an engineer around, when you just gotta put a pipe in here and not have to call somebody from out of town and schedule for them to be here.
We haven't, we don't have a staff engineer, no.
IT, I think we have a, we need to look at IT, we're growing tremendously.
I'd second that.
Every year.
Go ahead, sir.
Anything else you can think of that are, things that are?
That's covered quite a bit.
But absolutely, and, and what I'll do after, before your next meeting is I'll put all these things in a, under major topics, there are a lot of things that kind of relate to different things, but put those together for you so that you can review and then think about how many of these we can do at the same time, because there's only so many, much in staffing, and there's only so much in, we need to have some sort of priority way of looking at this, or way of assimilating that, so, can use these as lists for, for the question of why, is there anybody else that has anything else they'd like to see on the, on the list before we, this doesn't mean nothing else can ever go on it, it just means for right now, we go on to the next question.
Hi. I have a question, I have a question on your budget, we know this year, we will be switching from PERC over to MRC.
That's correct.
And if I read their latest information, there'll be a partial payment, and then things should be completed by August, and that's a very large puddle of money coming to the town of Bucksport, was it that in the $400,000 range?
No, the, those, those funds aren't paid directly to the town, that's not, they're, the put option that the town exercised for its share of PERC was, is an amount of money that comes to the town, the, through MRC, the reserve that's currently with the MRC stays with the MRC in the name of the town, it doesn't come back in a great big check to, to the community, that, that was not part of the MRC.
Now, had we left MRC, we would have got that money.
That's correct.
But the thing with it stays there.
Okay.
It, it stays there identified the same way as it is basically now under, as a charter community.
I get, and I guess the simpler way to look at it is, what have we got for monies coming in, I, I mean, are we running ahead on excise tax, are we running ahead on, on certain areas, if, we have a list of things potentially that what we'd like to try and do, where is the money gonna come from, you know, I guess the basic question is, do we want to maintain our services as they are, and keep our mill rate as is, or even try and lower it again? I mean, I like getting a check back from my mortgage company this year, because they had too much of a balance, so.
So, mill rate as is or lower, is that?
I think that's a general consensus.
Okay.
I know the last two years, we put money back, but am I correct in saying that?
We have, because what has happened for two years, three years, one thing that's happened is the school, three years ago, I think it was, they got more money from the state than they thought they were going to, and they sent, they sent money back, and so you had $168,000 left in your educational line item that was unexpended, so you carried it into the next year, and the next year, they made an error in their warrant, and so, there was $141,000 or so that they didn't bill us, so we had $141,000 that we brought forward, and this year, they got more money than they thought they were gonna do from the state, so they gave us a credit on some of that, so we have another amount that, again, moves forward, and what that does is, it reduces the amount that you're taking from taxation to support schools by that hundred, but this is the, will be the fourth year that we've had that moved into it, but there's also money. But there's also money that is left at year-end from unexpended budgets.
And I think that's what I'm talking about.
And that is, that is, that is appropriate. If at, at year-end, we're five or six percent remaining, then we've done a good job of budgeting. We don't wanna be on the other side of that. And, for specifically, things like highway, you know, depending on the kind of year you get, even though we budget for averages over time and not just one year, it still sometimes catches you, or if you have an easier winter, you have money left because you have not expended all the repair money, or all the overtime money, or those kind of things. And other things that happen are when the fire department or the police department get these grants for equipment that we budgeted to purchase some things, and then they've gotten grants. And so, the money that we budgeted goes back at the end of the year into fund balance, and then gets re-appropriated the next year into some other use.
But also, there may be things that pop up that require spending some of that money too, you know, if we need, that we hadn't budgeted for.
Well, exactly, but the, the reason there's some left is that they're, I think, managing their departments well in terms of their expenditures. And the other thing that makes that possible is they're not being penalized for having some left at the end of the year. If, if the council were to get in the habit of, huh, you've got $5,000, see, you don't need that. Doesn't mean they didn't need it, it might have been a grant that got equipment, it might have been weather that they didn't have to work. But if departments start to feel like they, then what happens is you have people that are, entities that may have a tendency at year-end to think they need to spend in order to preserve funding in the future. And, and I don't encourage that. And the way they're doing it, if you see money going back, that's money that can be re-appropriated. And especially if you've done it and still reduced your mill rate, then it's a responsible way to.
And I guess, my question was, is can that money be used?
It's all in fund balance, you can, you can do, you can use fund balance to do-
That was my question, is without raising taxes, we can do these things?
But you gotta remember, that money is gonna disappear, and, you know, hopefully we don't need it for something, you just have, you have to weigh those options, be cautious.
Well, then, I wouldn't-
I'm not saying, no, I mean-
Yes, the money is there.
Four years ago when the mill closed, we added an $8 million surplus roughly.
Yep.
We used $2 million of that. Since then, we put over $500,000 back into it. So we're back up to 600, or 6.5, 6.5 million dollars.
I think what you have to, have to look at is, we built that reserve, undesignated reserve, because we were afraid the mill was gonna shut down, and we were gonna to lose a lot of tax base, and we were gonna have to fund education for three years before the evaluation changed. Well, we didn't have to do that. So, is $6 million, do we really need $6 million now? Because there's no big one business that's gonna close down and take 45% of our-
And I guess, Mayor, that was my, that was my point, was-
There is $68 million in power plant assets still located at the mill site. I would, and that can, that can go away. And $60,000 to make a major hole in things that would need some shoring up. I, I'm not suggesting that six and a half is the right number or the wrong number, but there have been, there's been discussion that your marina's gonna need work when you do whatever harbor plan you do. And that, while there are grants available, that perhaps the town will loan the marina money and have the marina paying back that fund balance monies that are used for some of those things. But, the, you don't wanna get to where your fund balance is not enough to sustain being able to pay your bills year-round without borrowing in anticipation of taxes, or making you susceptible, if, God forbid, the school funding thing all goes in the air, which every time the legislature talks about it, has the, to, you know, you need that, that safety net protects people from this with the mill rate.
Well, that throws number one right out the window, if we don't have that.
That's right, you can't. This allows for that.
I have a question on the treatment facility. You know, we have this contingency money left over. And per the, I'll make it simple, per the rules of engagement, that has to be spent, it can't go back, it had-
It can, but it does no bonus, you can't pay off your loan with it or anything.
Yeah, so, the question becomes, we've been talking about solar power for the treatment facility. Now, in the packet we got, we have in here talking about a possibility of getting a forklift truck, they need a lawnmower, snowblower, the pickup, or the one ton is, either needs a body or a whole new pickup, and then two pumps, which are now 30 years old. So, and so in terms of MRO, maintenance, repair, and operation, could we use some of that contingency money towards some of these items that have been identified?
You know, things that are infrastructure within, not a snowblow, the infrastructure within the plant.
The pumps and, again, MRO kind of stuff, yeah. Can you use it to- I mean, to me, the electric bill, the solar panels would be the- Can you use it to construct new sewer lines? We haven't got a quote on that yet. The solar panels before have to do with mounted on the highway, and then you can have up to basically what they call eight meters to different locations.
And that will, that project you approved, and everything, that's more forward.
Oh, that's the project that stopped them, but-
Yeah, that's different from the treatment facility.
That's starting soon.
But, everything's in place for when revision starts on that, yeah.
At the highway.
At the highway garage.
Okay. I guess we have to have that, I guess we kinda have to have that discussion, what, how much is-
What's the number that you wanna pull?
That you feel comfortable with.
Well, the question I had, and we haven't seen, we changed our investment strategy a year and a half, two years ago, and put it into a different, that has to be, have done pretty well.
Well, I received an email this last week from Nazrin at the first, saying that they wanna come and talk to us about what you did, which was take a percentage of your, of what was available and put it in other than seeding, and it's been doing well. You didn't do it with a zillion dollars because you can't.
Right.
But, the portion that you did is doing very well. One is, is the account that was the main purse money, the $400,000 that came back to the town, that you used $60,000 of it in 15, 16, to offset retirement costs. And then the rest of it was invested so that it could grow enough, so that you could take a little bit every year to offset the cost of. And that's, that's doing well, as a matter of fact, the auditors remarked this year on the fact that those two funds have grown well, considering the size of it.
That's not part of the undesignated surplus we have.
That's my question, is that, is that grabbable, is that grabbable money that we could, you know, we wanna just take the interest, you know, or part of the interest and not, and not touch the-
You, you can, you can take, it's money under your control. You know, the one that you set up as main purse is designated for that-
For the retirement piece, correct, correct.
So that one-
But it was 1.5 or something that we, that we put in?
For the other, that, and that 1.5, it was, it was undesignedated fund balance without a purpose. You also have, in addition to the 6.45, you have 1.6 million in designated reserves.
For trucks and equipment, things like that, right, right.
Every department has a-
Every department, we've got the laundry list, recreation's got three reserves. We've got, you know, police equipment and highway equipment, and there's a, there's a whole list of them. And that, the total for that is approximately 1.6, I believe. You've got 528,000 in school designated. That is through the, when you went to the RSU, that there was an amount of money that remained, that has to be used for some purpose that relates to that educational kind of thing. You could, if you've got feels that the town owns the schools, that money is eligible for that purpose. And then the undesignedated pieces, partially 6.45.
So, there's monies available without touching the 6.5, theoretically?
Well, to do equipment, yes, you know, we've got, and we're doing that differently. We're not, we're doing that in leases and low-interest loans to minimize the need to feed those reserves, to keep them up to a certain level in order to be able to replace your equipment. But, the 6.5, if you, and you use, we budgeted 300, I think, $327,000 that into this year's budget to use a fund balance, you know, that-
To bring it down, yeah.
To-
Not carry so much forward.
Once upon a time, back in the day, you were using $800,000. You know, you were reserving $800,000 a year. You know, you weren't using, not certainly, that, you know, you were using probably $400,000, but you were putting away money into reserving for equipment and things at the rate of $800,000 or more a year. And, and we've brought that down to the $300,000 range because your circumstances have changed in terms of valuation. So, we're not saving at the same rate in any respect that you were once upon a time, because you were doing more than setting aside $6.5 million for, or $8 million for fund balance. You were also heavily reserving for all of your equipment accounts and all of that kind of stuff. And, you built stuff a lot, and you didn't go out and borrow money to do it. You just used money that you budgeted from, for those kind of things. And those, those are the things that you really can't do now, you know, because you, you had this regenerating pot of money at the time that you don't have now. And so, being judicious about how you do this, so that for the long term, it provides the most stability for the taxpayers of this community to keep their mill rate at a reasonable thing if you're gonna provide the services. That, that really is, you know, when you're looking at this money, it isn't this year or next year, or even five years from now. You, you need to make sure that 10 or 15 years from now, you're, that there's still stability in terms of-
Paying the bills.
Paying the bills and not having people's mill rate, but there's nothing harder on, that's up here than it's down here, than it's up here, that, you know, that's just, you can't budget for it.
They hate us, they love us, they hate us, they love us.
Well, not, it's not even hate us, love us, it's just not, it's not responsible. You know, people, income doesn't do that. So if we do that to them, then that's just wrong, so.
So, is the question, you know, in simple terms, there's our number. These are our things that we wanna do.
And there's a wide variety of ways-
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, we wanna figure out, you know, have you get that together and figure out as a group where these are? And, and, you know, throw a dart and see what that number's gonna be that we need to do to be able to stay with that, and if we have to, you know, pirate some money out of our account.
Or prioritize how these things happen. Or, maybe some of them are important, but not gonna start till you get a grant to seed it. Or, there's a number of ways that, that that's, when I say funded, it doesn't mean carving, just carving up that one pie. There's outside funding that the town needs to apply for, that it would be eligible for in order to at least help with some of these things that are up there.
With the revaluation that we did, is that, that's not gonna affect our overall?
No, I haven't, I haven't gotten a report from Jeff yet on, that's slated to take effect April 1st of this year.
This year.
But, I, I don't think that there's any tada moment here.
Well, I guess that's what I'm asking, that's not gonna happen, correct?
I, I don't, that's not what I sense. But, the, the properties that he's visited that had a dramatic valuation change, either up or down, were properties that hadn't been looked at in many years, or may have added something or things changed. But, he's sending letters out to everyone whose valuation is, is changing and to give them an opportunity to come in and review the information and all that before, before that we get anywhere near a commitment. So, that is, but I-
I guess my question is, we don't need to take, we don't need to take that into, into account into a great deal, that you don't think?
It's not going to drive us up 20 million, and it's not gonna drop us 20 million. That, that isn't gonna happen. What it, what it does is fairly a portion of tax for amongst everybody, where right now, there may be segments that it isn't.
Hey, I have a question, follow-up to what the mayor asked about the sewer lines. Some of the money that's remaining from the secondary treatment can be applied to installing sewer lines? Is that correct?
Well, the, yes. And it, sure, there's some caveats, but yes, it's, needs to be related to sewer infrastructure.
What's the deadline for the expenditures of that?
Don't have a deadline at that right, right at the moment. But the remainder of the plant work is, there's the laundry list left from construction that they're coming back to finish this spring. So, I would say that decisions will need to be made by fall for where that money would be expended, because the feds are gonna want it to be expended.
Do you have any idea what kind of money you're talking about that's remaining within Yankee Stadium ballpark?
350 to 400,000 dollars.
I saw one of our budget managers put in a request that may be able to-
That what?
I saw one of the budget managers put in something that we may be able to use that towards.
Those two pumps?
No, the town garage, run a sewer up to the town garage.
We have, we have a building at the town garage that's outside, and there's no water in it.
Right.
No sewer, it's, anyway. So, this is the goal, and we're gonna look at funding these to see how this impacts this, to come up with a kind of a number that you, because these, in addition to some other things that are in your department head requests, are things that they're gonna see in your budget.
I think part of this, though, should also include that we continue to provide the essential services that the citizens need and expect.
I think that's what, what happened three years ago, you know, we didn't wanna diminish those services, and we heard that loud and clear, and that's likely we had that cash to pull and take care of that. Because we don't wanna turn into one of those towns where we're just trying to cut, 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 and then we don't end up with the services that, I think-
Well, if you wanna attract people to be here-
It's all these things. Yeah.
And it's not that the town does everything, but it needs to provide an environment that business wants to locate in and people wanna live in.
So, in our first budget meeting, we will have stuff from the department heads on what their initial budget is. what their initial budget is.
Oh, yeah, their, their budgets are due to me by the fifteenth of February. I asked them, and I really appreciate the, all the work they did in putting these things together ahead of time, because this is in addition to their budget work, so that, um, they're bringing to my and your attention needs that they see in their department either now or down the road. And I, those will all need to be talked about as we report also.
Can, can we get all these put into groups?
I'm fine with that.
So that then, then we can take and put priorities based on groups?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I did, the, all of these, I'll take these and all of these items will be by, you've got a number that are transportation related, you've got a bunch that are infrastructure related in terms of sidewalks and, um, all, all these other kind of things. So, it'll be by topic and then you can look at how you want to do it. And I will also provide for you a, a, the same kind of bullet list that organizes the department head.
Can, can you also, like, ones you think that would qualify for a possible grant?
I, I'm going to identify funding sources.
Okay.
Possible ones, by the ones that I am aware of that have-
It's been, it's been a number of years since we've had any type of grant, I believe. I don't think we've gotten any-
Well, you've gotten six hundred thousand through fire on the last, since I've been here, so.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I mean, like-
You're talking for the, the-
Like, infrastructure-type grant.
Well, you, you've got five point four million of your treatment plan.
Yeah.
So that-
David wants to build roads.
Roads, recreational facilities, transportation.
Yeah, well-
I'd rather do it on grant money than, uh-
Well, the, the, I think it's fair to say probably, and I wasn't here then, but I would think that that whole sewer system discussion must have been pretty significant for this community over the years that you were, first your primary was okay, then it wasn't, and then spend three million dollars on a soil concentrator and then, oh, that's not great enough, spend another thirteen and a half on-
I don't know if there was a lot of conversation about it, I think, I think it was just, it's, it's not, and I wasn't here, I, I mean, I'll, I'll defer, but I think it was-
How about Hightburn, there has to be, or middle.
We really had no choice.
But, but, but again, I think you go back to, there was a pool of income coming all the time and it was, we're going to, we're going to do this. And the discussion is, there isn't one.
And, and now, if you want to do all these things, the, it's not just because there's a great big thing down at the other end of the, you can do this, there has to be a more creative way to look at that. It doesn't mean you not, don't use any of the money, because I've had people tell me that we should just take that six and a half million and spread it across the mill rate and call it good, and that would work well for one year and then it would not work well, because you would not, you just about cover one commitment and then you have nothing.
And I don't think anybody here is asking that, I think I-
No, 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 I, I, I don't suggest there, but, but it sounds like a lot of money until you think about how much-
How much is not.
What you have to maintain and what you're trying to do in terms of infrastructure and all those kind of things, so.
I think, I think our phase one of our industrial park was basically a grant for sewer and water lines run up to the industrial park.
Phase one, you mean?
Yeah.
May have been. Anyway, so we will do that and I will put these in-
And we, and we don't say enough, you know, and Sean and, 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 and all the other folks that are in here that are on budgets, the reason we are able to do these things is because they do, like you say, keep it five, ten, fifteen percent, whatever the number is, because they all live here, you know, they're, 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 they want to keep the bill rate down too, you know, it's, it's not like they're just going and spending money foolishly, because it, it doesn't happen here, and I think that's, you know.
And as long as the council is supportive of, of that work and not saying, bottom line, you've got five thousand dollars up, you, you don't need it for next year, because you didn't spend it this year, that-
That, that's a scary way to run budgets, isn't it, yeah?
But it's not necessarily an uncommon one, but it's, it, it discourages your department heads from dotting their i's and crossing their t's if you, if they're punished for doing good work.
Well, school systems used to, weren't allowed to carry fund balance forward, so they, didn't they used to spend money like crazy in May, and the law changed so they could-
They have fund balance now, yeah.
They can now have-
Yeah. You know, ten or fifteen years ago, they couldn't carry a fund balance forward, so they spent like drunken sailors the last two weeks.
Water districts can't get rabid until they're in the red, so they aren't-
Yeah.
I know you, someone, a lot of people did a lot of the work for a lot of years to look out for the financial future of this community and being a steward of that and making sure that that goes forward is, you're very fortunate that you have that foundation to work from.
They, I just want to say, you know, your question about the sewerage treatment, you folks did take some heat periodically on that very point, if you remember, Mr. Mayor, from various people in the town about why are you saving all this money, what are we doing that? I, I heard that year after year when budget time came around. So there were people out there that kept asking that question, what's, what's this all about? And I think they took more heat from that than they did, as you said, you had to do it, you had to do the sewer treatment plan anyhow, so, but there were people out there who didn't understand the need for this. It was wise.
Well, very fortunate right now, there's a lot of groups in the community working on a lot of different things that, that augment the work that are here and if, if that's going on and, and the town maintains and improves its infrastructure, then, you know, it, it really can be, um, it, it's hard to find housing, because there's not, not anything for sale, because it, so much has been sold. I mean, that's why there's not inventory, it doesn't stay on the market long enough to do with that. And that's a good thing, means that people want to come here. And your schools have room for them to come, if they're young people and without major expansions and all that kind of stuff, that's a fortunate position.
Well, there was also an article in the Bangor Daily News, I think it was an editorial in the Bangor Daily News today, about, um, a power shortage, uh, coming up. And they've, I've been, uh, happing on this for almost a year, but they noted that, um, you know, the power plants, uh, the nuclear plants are shutting down and that, um, the, not keen on giving out new permits for oil-burning power plants, but they are for gas. But then on the gas side of things, some of the contracts are being written that if a, um, I won't call it a crisis, but a need for homeowners for gas succeeds, then they can take that gas away from business and direct it to homes. So here we are with three hundred megawatts sitting down the street and, um, in May of next year, Pilgrim is coming offline and that's going to be six hundred and eighty megawatts that they're going to lose in the system. So it remains to be seen what will happen down here with the, the three hundred megawatts. The system right now, according to the editorial, has not broken, it, it's met its needs, but it's running right on the edge. So, it's, uh, that's become more valuable than we expect.
I hope so. I don't want it, I don't want that valuation going, personally.
Any other comments from the public?
We didn't ask for public on the budget side. Did anyone have, from the public, any comments on what they wanted to see out of budget priorities?
I would just ask that you review the money that we set aside for the Northeast Cable Consortium, or whatever it's now called, and I question always when you even bother on that.
Well, I, I hope you feel like this was a worthwhile exercise. Um, I know that, that I find it very helpful to do this at the beginning of the fiscal year, because in preparing a budget that you want to see, it needs to include the things that you think are important, or at least a, a way to address those, and it also, we also need a way to, to be accountable for what we say are priorities that are here and to see how we're doing in those things. And I think that meetings such as this can help with that.
Absolutely, awesome.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Some of these will go out beyond a year, though.
Oh, absolutely, but they're still priorities, they-
Yeah, yeah, things we've got to plan for.
That's right.
Someone put a million dollars away for every year. Okay.
Can you put them on there?
Item three.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor?
I'm just gonna, I make a pop of the note, and, yeah, so, uh, we're gonna have a clicker event, we're gonna do very similar things to what was done here tonight for a little more design right now, we're gonna have two clicker events, they're gonna be on, uh, February tenth and February twenty-eighth. There'll be more information coming on, of which the public will be invited in to review various topics that the folks have given us. You'll be able to vote electronically, clicker, um, whether you think it's a priority or not a priority. I'm real excited about seeing what comes out of this and how you organize it and what we get for data on that as well, which will be shared with the council. Priorities, whether it's important, whether it's feasible, the two main issues. So there could be some things a lot of people like, that we're just going to have to say they're going to have to decide, it's not feasible right now. So we wish everybody here to come and, um, experience this. Thank you very much for the time.
Yeah, the zip line from the fort to the town dog is not going to be built.
We had a motion to second.
Yeah, all those in favor? We did that.